My name is Janet Duke and I am a member of the Parents Reconciling Network Board. I also am the founder of a website called StrongFamilyAlliance.org, where some of the material that we'll be covering today is sourced. Both the Parents Reconciling Network and the Strong Family Alliance are focused on supporting parents of LGBTQ. So this particular topic today is about parent actions, what helps and what hurts. And every family's situation is a little different, but trying to understand things that we can do to assist or things we might need to avoid so we don't cause problems can be very helpful, and that's what this summary of information is about. When a child first comes out, parents almost always have some really complex feelings and reactions, even when they've kind of been expecting it. It can be emotional at the time, and emotions can run really high. It can be difficult to remember that your child is trusting you with some really, really personal information. And the number one reason that youth give for coming out to their parents is their desire to be honest with the people they love. So it is very hard to come out, and if you can just remember that, it may help you manage some of the things, the emotions that you go through within this process. And you may or may not know that parents' initial decisions and reactions are very impactful and can be very damaging and even life-threatening. So I want to just touch on some of the risks before I talk about things that help and things that hurt. Good parenting needs insight, and most parents are not familiar with a lot of LGBTQ issues until they are confronted by it from someone they love or from one of their children. So the Centers for Disease Control has a lot of research on this topic, and they know that LGBTQ teens have better health outcomes when parents and families support them in affirming ways, and that when they feel valued, these teens are much less likely to experience depression, to attempt suicide, to use drugs and alcohol, or to contract sexually transmitted diseases. But there's a lot more research in this arena. For instance, we know that really more than 40% of the homeless youth on the street are LGBTQ. They've been rejected by their families, or they've run away from home because of hostile environments. An LGBTQ youth is eight times more likely to attempt suicide than their peers when they're rejected by their family, and in fact, suicide is the number one cause of death for LGBTQ. Fifty-five percent of them say they feel unsafe at school because of their identity, and more than 10% of them say they cut classes and miss school because of fear. Forty-two percent say their community as a whole is not accepting, so they're living in a world that is not encouraging of them. They are three times more likely to be bullied, and 92% of LGBTQ youth say they hear negative messages about themselves, their identity, and their community. So there's a lot of negative water around them, if you would, and we try to be the best lifeboat we can. The good news is that parents often don't realize how important their roles are and how their comments, attitudes, and actions play, and this goes really throughout the life of this LGBTQ person. This is not just something that affects teens, but you can really steer a young person in a positive direction, and what you choose to do or not to do can make a big difference, which is what this presentation is about. And it's important to know it's never too late to parent well, that actions can always help, and they can always hurt. So it's good to learn at whatever point you are in this relationship how you might be the best parent you can. So starting with the things that help, the number one question parents don't get asked, but the number one questions that LGBTQ want to ask is, will you always love me? Whether it's directly spoken or never mentioned, that's the question that's on their mind when they come out, and it's much more important than the words, "I'm gay" or "I'm trans." They have a real fear, not only of rejection, but of disappointing you or of causing pain, either now or over time. And it's essential to express affection when a child comes out, and on a continual basis. Anytime you can show pride, or support, or encouragement, that's a positive thing for the child. And it's really important, and I think helpful, to remember that this is the same child that you've loved their whole life long. This is just one part of who they are, and if you can keep it from being the dominating thing and keep it in perspective, that often helps with parent balance as well. Warmth and respect and displays of affection are always vital. Don't ever hesitate to say "I love you," and really focus on keeping all those little gestures and carrying routines that we typically have with kids: hugs and pet names, sharing activities, laughter, conversation, travel together, just talking over the day. All of those are important gestures of affection, and they show the child they're loved, even if you're still kind of struggling with where you are on this. You are learning a new vision of your child and their future, and it takes time. So what's important in the meantime is to do all you can to preserve the connection. The second thing parents can do is to keep talking and listening. Silence is deadly, and particularly with younger people, they may think you're angry with them if you don't talk to them or don't talk to them about what they've said. Silence makes any topic seem taboo, and it really kills communications. Where open discussion helps them feel loved and supported, and that they have a place they can go to talk. You can ask about their experiences and ideas and feelings. It doesn't all have to be about their identity. You can talk about anything, but try not to avoid talking about sexuality or identity. If they want to talk about it, at least listen. And bear in mind that listening is more important than what you say. And someone told me, a counselor told me once, to talk a lot less than you listen, and that was some of the best advice I ever got. You're navigating a new situation, and early on particularly, your child's going to know more about this than you are. So you will learn with your child, and they really need a safe sounding board for ideas and situations and worries and celebrations, and you can be that. You can always ask how you can help or what they need. They may or may not want something, but you can always offer, but you can always listen. And then there's an article that I referenced here down at the bottom of the page called "Be an Askable Parent." The whole thing about talking about sex and sexuality, most parents don't go, "Wow, that's my favorite topic. I can't wait to talk about it." It can be hard, but this article is about how to be approachable and how to be open when talking about sex, and it's short, but it's very helpful, and there are several tips there that I have here. One is to really think about your own feelings about love and sexuality, so you can kind of sort through, why am I having this reaction, or why do I feel this way, or, you know, what is it that's worrying me? And then also, they advise, don't worry about several things that I thought were helpful. One is, don't worry about being with it, that they have peers that are with it more than you or I are ever going to be. Don't worry about being embarrassed, they probably are too. This is very personal information, and both of you deserve a certain degree of privacy, but it's also helpful to talk as openly as you can. And don't worry about missing some answers. It's okay to say you don't know, and maybe you will try to find that answer together. Number three is stand up for your child, and if you've been on our other talks, you've heard this before, but you may hear negative comments. You saw those stats I gave earlier about your child or about LGBTQ in general, and I think you have to be ready to speak up with a different point of view. If your child is not out, your words are even more of a powerful statement of what you feel and that you're an approachable person, and you should always be aware that your child and others in your family or in the conversation are listening. Once your child is more public, then it's important to make it known that you don't accept discrimination or teasing or insults to your child, and this is often particularly important with family members who may feel they have a right, they have a relationship and can say whatever they want. So sometimes you have to step in. You have to defend your child and advocate for them even while you're still processing yourself, and this can come from a lot of places, and you may or may not be there. It can be teachers or coaches, other church members. I cannot tell you the really difficult stories I've heard about youth pastors or people that feel they've got to save your child. It can come from neighbors or community members or store clerks. It's really something that your child is going to face a lot, and when you can, step in and advocate, you should. When you can't, you should be a listening ear, and especially you should insist that family members treat your child with respect. They may feel they have a right to editorialize, and you just need to make sure that whatever they say is respectful and not condemning. Number four, make sure your child feels affirmed and supportive, and parents say, "So how do I do that?" And all the things I've mentioned already are examples, but one big one too is just really taking time to educate yourself and come to terms with what you're feeling and your reactions so that you can talk calmly and with very respectful language all through this process. You can make an effort to know their friends and partners to get to know them, and you can listen in a way that invites open discussion. Especially younger kids, they're teenagers, and they're going through this whole teen thing of, "Who am I? What am I supposed to be like?" And your child kind of needs a place to talk about that. You want to let that be something they can raise along with any other worries they have. Continue to include them in family activities so they don't feel isolated. Help your child find support organizations and go with them to understand what's there, and I'll talk a little bit more about that. But I also want to recommend this article from the Centers for Disease Control about things that parents might need to know to help their teens. It has a lot of good information in it. This is a big one, number five, help your child envision and believe they can be a happy LGBTQ adult. Research shows that when families are accepting, that 92% of youth believe they will have good lives, and that 69% of LGBTQ want to become a parent. That's when families are supportive, and your acceptance and optimism helps them envision a positive future. They're trying to build a new view of themselves, and it may be a little different from what the world has told them it ought to be. So you can help counteract the hopelessness and the sense of isolation that can contribute to risk of suicide or other destructive behaviors. You can encourage your child to build on natural strengths, and sometimes this means you have to help them find activities outside of school. It could be art, or music, or sports, or scouting, or service organizations, or any kind of activity, including a job, that helps them build on what strengths they have. You can urge them to try new things, and especially you can take steps to help them build on skills that they already have. Anything that helps them feel more confident, more clearly identified who they are and what they can do is helpful. Overall, you just want to foster hope and optimism. Talk about the future. When they have a dream or an idea, talk about it and let them express it. My son was not LGBTQ, but I remember once he was wanting, he was in middle school, saying, "I'm going to be a pro football player when I grow up." He loved football, he was determined, and his dad and I were going, "Oh, well, that's really hard," and you know, da-da-da-da-da. And he said, "This is my dream. Let me dream it." And I just thought that was such a great answer, such a great topic. So they may not reconcile every dream they have into reality, but help them build new dreams. It's a really important thing you can do. Practice self-care, both physically and emotionally, and just know that your optimism and helping them be optimistic does a lot to reduce risky behaviors. Six, it's really important to understand the meaning of sexual orientation and gender identity, and for most of us, until we're confronted by this, we don't really get this clear in our head. So sexual orientation has to do with romantic, emotional, or sexual feelings. Think of it as crushing on somebody, and this is about attraction to another person. Gender identity is about a person's interview of themselves. It's about self-perception. So they're not the same thing. And there's a really helpful TED Talk on this by Sam Kellerman that I recommend. You can just search on TED Talk, Sam Kellerman, it'll probably pop up, but he has a humorous but very informative take on how to understand sexual orientation and gender identity that you might like to watch. Connect them with LGBTQ resources, and there are often support groups or alliances or meeting places, or even just a GSA club in school or something that they could participate in. Go with them, or try to understand the programs and help as much as you can to connect. And I have to say, parents often fear these connections, especially early on, because they're afraid their child might be indoctrinated or exploited, and there's a lot of dread of dating, you know? Gosh, I don't know, I don't know that person, I don't know their family, I don't know anything about them, and they get worried. But LGBTQ isolation is really a serious risk, and I try to encourage parents to just remember, all teens want this. All teens want peer groups, and they want to do activities with friends that are like them, and connections help them feel less alone and less afraid or ashamed. So this is a very natural thing, so what you want to do is do the best you can to help them find places to connect that are healthy in your community. Now, a lot of communities may not have that, and it may be as small as maybe one or two other families that you link up with that either have LGBTQ loved ones, so they'll be accepting of your family, or maybe have a child and you can do some things together. But even if that's not there for everybody, you need to know they are going to find some online resources, and there are some terrible ones out there. So do what you can to help them find positive ones, and these are just some very quick examples. One that I like personally, again, is on the Centers for Disease Control website, and it's called Connecting Safely, and it's just got a long list of sites and organizations where you can get positive information and scientific information for you or your kids. The Trevor Project is really focused on addressing the suicide risk among LGBTQ, but it also has a whole lot of information for youth and for parents that's very helpful. And It Gets Better is a website that's kind of a shot in the arm. It's video after video after video from both LGBTQ individuals who kind of talk about their experience and how things helped them or got them through, and how things got better, and they're trying to encourage their peers. But there are also a lot of politicians, celebrities, public figures, writers, authors, parents that are out there telling the same story. So it's a place when your child gets discouraged, or you get discouraged, or you just want to hear other people's stories, that you can go and spend some time watching short videos. Eight, I think it's important to anticipate some confusion, confusion on their part. There are so many negative messages in our culture that it may seem odd to you that at times your child wants to be very open, and other times they want to be, they don't want to say anything about it or have you comment on it, and especially if the child is in the process of coming out gradually, you may find yourself in that position. But it's common for them to duck their head in a time that's really, they don't want to be publicly recognized as being LGBTQ, so just try to stay in lockstep with them. You want to always affirm their feelings and just know that these feelings of attraction or crushing or "who am I," it's just a natural part of maturing, and help them see it that way and not as something weird that they're going through. It's really important to allow them to wonder about themselves. It's very typical of the teen years, and I spoke to this earlier, "Who am I? What's my life going to be like? Who am I going to partner with? Where am I going to fit in?" And all you can do to listen to this really lets them work it out, and also is great for building communication, and you may get some really insights into what their hopes are or what their worries are that can help you be more connected to them. It's also important to expect some confusion on your part. We have to remember that nobody can be talked into or out over persuaded about their sexual orientation or gender identity. And if I'm heterosexual and comfortable, I may not fully understand what it means to be different. I found I was constantly suggesting to my child something that worked for me, and it took me a while to realize that what worked for me as a heterosexual teenager in a long time ago wasn't necessarily going to work well for them as an LGBTQ youth today. So it's just important to, you can make suggestions and talk about your experience, but they have a different experience, and you have to let them have it. So given those, I want to talk a little bit about some parent actions that hurt. It can be a shock when your child comes out, and both you and the child can be very vulnerable to strong emotions for a long time. Comments and attitudes and actions can all have negative effect, and I think it's really important to give yourself some grace, because often these are unintended. The whole reason I want to talk about actions that hurt is sometimes parents don't realize that what they're doing could be hurtful, and always shaming and shunning and blaming are negative, but it's important to know that can really cause health and mental health problems for LGBTQ. One point I want to make is that even protective efforts can seem rejecting, and one of the most common ones, I hear this over and over and over from parents, has to do with appearance, with how they look. Often when kids come out, their appearance is a major change. They may dress differently, they may dye their hair pink, they may shave it all off, they may wear extreme jewelry or costumes, and in some ways, sometimes it's just to differentiate from their peers. Sometimes it's to differentiate from you, from the adult world, and certainly often it may be different from what we see as appropriate. It's a frequent area of concern, but I really want to urge you to do as much as you can to be tolerant of it, and let me give you this story I hear all the time, and I use my personal story, but I've heard this over and over and over. So my daughter was being bullied, and as we were shopping for high school one year, I was trying to guide her toward more feminine clothes just to keep those blows from coming her way, and I made this suggestion and that one, and kept trying, and she was kind of quiet, and then finally she turned to me and looked right in my eye and said, "Mom, can't you just love me?" And it never occurred to me, what I saw is trying to protect her. She felt as rejecting who she was and denying who she was. So that's what I mean by protective efforts can seem rejecting, and you just have to be really careful about what, how it may come across, and maybe be prepared to apologize, which I had to do. Some guidelines can be appropriate, I'm not saying don't have any, but you just have to be aware of how they may be perceived. If it comes across as a rejection of their identity, or some desire for them to hide or keep a low profile, or avoid drawing fire, something that is going to be their fault, then you have to really be careful about that, and practice supporting their choices if you can. It gives them a feeling of control, of individuality, it lets them practice decision-making, and I will say, all of us can probably look back at our middle school and high school yearbooks and go, "What was I thinking?" So time may moderate some of this, it may get better over time, but if you can, you know, let them do as much as they can as you feel is safe. Abusive behaviors can have a really wide range, and I just want to list these. I hope none of them are issues for you, but sometimes you may see them from relatives too, so I don't want to not speak to them. Aggression can be belittling, or insulting, or dominating, recurrent criticism, arguing, trying to control them, and especially ganging up on a family member. Sometimes one person makes a comment, and then aunt and uncle and grandfather all chime in. So that's an abuse kind of situation. Lack of affection, an absence of verbal affirmations or physical affection is a kind of abuse, just a general coldness. A lack of encouragement or avoidance also are forms of coldness. Neglect, like not paying attention or ignoring one another, or displaying discomfort, where you might walk into where several family members are, and you'll talk to two of the three, but not the third, and talking over or around someone, and lack of eye contact. These are all ways to distance. And of course, there's violence, and I have to say, LGBT kids wind up in the hospital more than most kids, because they are hit or hurt or sexually abused, and it's so important to know that any kind of a blow really breaks the basic trust that kids have that a parent is safe. So it's very important to avoid these and make sure you are just aware of them around other family members as well. Also, sometimes it's siblings, you know, and it's hard to determine, are my two boys just having their usual bi-weekly slugfest, or is this something else going on? So you have to keep an eye on it. Insults or name-calling, this is something you may see in general public too, and it's a form of abuse that chips away at self-esteem, and if it's from someone they know and trust, it really corrodes that trust. And examples of it are name-calling, "Are you stupid?" Or shame, "You embarrass me, you embarrass us, you're such a disappointment." Comparisons, like "I wish you were more like your sister," or teasing, in public especially, you know, "Oh, she sucks at studies, she'll never do that, you know, she's just no good at that." Rejection, outright rejection, like "Shut up," or "Get out of here," or extreme or negative criticism, "You're not good for anything. Why can't you make me proud on even one thing?" And all of these are forms of blame and anger or rejection, and they really put a distance between the speaker and the target, and it's just important to be very aware of how those can come across to a child that's already vulnerable. Excluding your child from family activities, and this is one early on that's not uncommon, where they, the parent or someone, a sibling, someone that would normally do something with them says, "Not this time, maybe next time." And this is a form of ostracizing, and it really reduces their feelings of belongings, can lower their self-esteem, they feel like they don't have any control and they're not meaningful in the family, and it creates this sense of isolation that leads to emotional pain or self-harming behavior. As adults, this winds up to be more like, "You can come, but not your partner," or, "Gee, I don't know if I want to meet your partner," or, "I don't want to come to your house, but you can come to mine." So you just have to really think about how these things come across and how it can be damaging to your relationship. Blaming if the child when discrimination or bullying occurs, and this is, this can happen really easily, because some of it is, you almost want to say, "Well, what do you expect when..." whatever. But if your child is being bullied or discriminated against, you need to remember they are the victim, even if you think it's true, even if something they did may have drawn fire. Don't point to that sexual orientation or identity as a reason, because it makes it seem like they deserve it. And I want to just say, this can take so many forms. It can be teasing, that it goes too far, that actually becomes harassment. It can be loss of friends, especially in the teenage years, this is not uncommon, where if a person comes out, then some of their friends may fall away. Not that it has anything to do with a change in your child, but often that other person, they don't want to be identified as gay. "What if someone thinks I'm gay? What if someone thinks I'm trans? I don't want to be..." you know, and they're not that open about it, but it happens. So friends fall away. That makes the ones who stick even more important, and why it's so important to get to know them and welcome them into your activities in your home. Lots of opportunities. This comes in a lot of ways. They may not be chosen for class office, they may not be allowed to go on a trip or invited to join a team, they may get cut from a team or cut from some activity, and it happens a lot. And very often, it's teachers, or a situation where you can't really question it because you can't prove that that was the issue, but just know that it does happen, and it can be very painful for your child. Also ostracism in their high school community. One thing I found out long after my daughter was out of high school was that for two years she ate alone in the cafeteria because no one wanted to sit with her. So it happens. And gossip, Lord, we all know about gossip, and in the day of social media, it's really serious. And then it can be vandalism too. They can have things stolen. I've heard cokes poured over your backpack, lockers being graffiti, cars being damaged, things being stolen, your house having a sign painted on the outside of it. So there are a lot of different forms, and you just need to not blame your child when it happens. An alternative approach, and you sometimes, I don't know, I found I didn't always know about it at the time, it came later, but just let them talk. They really need to be outraged and hurt, and you can let them be that. You want to show sympathy, "I'm so sorry this happened to you, this is not right, and you don't deserve it." And you can ask if you can help, but you have to take their guidance. I have had a child take my help, and I've also had them say, "No, it would make it worse." So you have to be prepared for both of those. Rejecting your child's word that they are LGBTQ, and this is often just the initial quick reaction, particularly for parents that haven't had any hint, they just haven't expected it at all. Their reaction is usually, "Oh, it's just a phase, they'll outgrow it, they're trying to be funny or cool," or whatever. But disbelief or denial can be highly negative, and I just want to point out that most youth do not casually come out as LGBTQ. Their process, and we have a whole nother topic on this, is usually to think about this for months and years before they do it. They know it's going to carry challenges and stigma, it's not something they do lightly. So if you can, don't deny the disclosure. You may need time to adjust and learn, and in fact, there's research that shows for most parents, it is about two years before they really begin to feel comfortable with their child's change in identity. So give yourself some grace and allow yourself some time. It doesn't always happen overnight, and just know that they trusted and loved you enough to be honest, and that is a huge compliment. Seven, using religion against them. It's a sin, or you're It's a sin, are you here, you're such a disappointment, or you'll, what will we say at church? Or when you're going to church, parents will say, just don't, don't do anything, just don't act like it, please. This is really deeply wounding, and there's research that shows for children who have been raised in a faith, where they're, it's really part of their family fabric. This is the second most damaging thing you can do. The first damaging thing is rejection by the family, and the second is rejection by their church. So it will not create positive change to say these kind of things to them. And it's particularly painful if they've been connected to a church community. It can really create self-hate and self-doubt, and lead to a deep spiritual crisis. There are so many LGBTQ individuals who have left the church forever, and will never come back because of wounds that they suffered. So it's just important to be really aware of this. My daughter has said more than once to me, when someone tells me they're a Christian, I'm afraid of them. And that is just a horrible thing to hear, but I understand it. And I think we have to be really aware of what our alternatives are. One is, virtually every denomination or faith religion that I have looked into, tried to research, has got a support group for LGBTQ. So wherever you go to church, look them up. You can find them probably by a Google search. Because there's somebody out there that can help you answer the questions about your particular faith, your particular issues, that might help you be a better support to your LGBTQ child. And then finally, you may have to really consider finding a different faith home, changing churches, going somewhere else. If your child is being wounded repeatedly in your church, you have to really think about whether you're helping their spiritual growth, or the spiritual growth of the family. It can be hard, I, this is really a tough one, but just be aware that families have done it, have found a supportive church, and have sometimes found that it was the best thing they ever did for their family as a whole. Because it gave the whole family a framework for loving and supporting that child, and for maintaining their faith. One final thing I want to touch on is, it's really important to understand that this is a journey for both you and your child, that it takes a while to build this new view of their future. It takes work to preserve a relationship. It can be hard, and I really want to encourage you to take the long view. And I mentioned that research that says it takes about two years at least for families to, parents to really get more comfortable with it. But I'll give you another example, and that is on the Strong Family Alliance website. We have a place where parents can tell their story, and we have ten questions there that they can ask, answer rather. And the very last one is, are you sorry that your child came out to you? And every single one of them says, no. And then we ask why. And they say things like, I have a relationship I never dreamt of having with my child. We have better communication, I'm closer to him than I ever was before. We are so much more honest with each other, we have a stronger relationship, I wouldn't change it for anything. And they didn't get there overnight, it wasn't quick, but they got there, and that's the encouraging part I want to leave you with. And then the final point I would make, and I love this quote, and I use it over and over, is this quote from Dr. Phil. You can be your child's anchor, their safe place, don't ever drop your end of the rope. I think it's a great distillation of a lot of the things that we're trying to say through Parents Reconciling Network, and through Strong Family Alliance. And I hope this presentation has been helpful to you. Thank you for your time, we'll see you on another topic.